Like to, on behalf of the City of Lakewood, call the Lakewood City Council into session for our joint meeting with the Clover Park School Board for January 25th, 2021. Board Chair?
And I would acknowledge that the Clover Park School District is going to officially call our joint meeting with the City Council to order as well, and with that, we have full attendance.
As do we. It's a great pleasure that we could all get together, including our CEOs here, and discuss some things. I see from the agenda that I'm up. The first item we'd like to go over is what Lakewood is doing with respect to the Lakewood Business Park and what's going on there as a result of our city initiatives and the Clover Park School District's disposition of property. Just a little bit of background, currently, there's 188 acres zone light industrial and more than 2 million square feet of light industrial manufacturing property, even either built or currently under construction. This is meeting what's been a tremendous need for light industrial and distribution and warehousing along the I-5 corridor, along with light manufacturing. Our economy's changing. COVID accelerated that. It didn't change the general trajectory, but it did certainly change the pace at which the economy has changed. This creates hundreds of jobs for Pierce County, including family wage jobs, and also had the salutary effect of cleaning up light. It was done in a manner that provided this relocation assistance to individuals, to areas with more adequate service. The Port of Tacoma was a partner with us. They essentially had run out of property in Frederickson, and were looking for partners to help facilitate growth in Pierce County, which would enable the continuation, expansion of port traffic. And so they helped, along with others, in creating this opportunity for economic development. So far, there's been an estimate of $220 million of private sector investment in property and improvements in this area. And if we have some graphics here that if the Schumacher could screen share, go back and show you how the transformation has taken place. If you haven't been out there recently, you really should take a look, because if you've been away for six months, you wouldn't recognize some of it. See how big we can get that. So back in 2000 and 2001, the city created 117 and a half acre industrially zoned area in Woodbrook in its comprehensive plan and zoning. The purpose was to simulate, stimulate, say sewer extension to and jobs in the area. And it was instrumental in gaining funding for sewer extensions. The sewer extensions were actually done by the City of Lakewood and not by the sewer utility, which is quite unusual. Grants and some other funding opportunities arose, along with some availability charges that allowed us to piecemeal this together and provide the sewer trunk lines in this previously unsuared area. 20 acres of the property, basically across the street from the Woodbrook Middle School site, had been assembled by a, were assembled after that by a single entity in anticipation of a development community. I was told it took them about 10 years to put that together. So if we move on to 2008, that's when the Port of Tacoma partnered with the City of Lakewood to fund the Woodbrook Business Park redevelopment report, and this key partnership prepared for an industrial expansion. So in July of 2009, the report was published, and its main conclusion was that right-of-way improvements needed to be paid. The middle school needed to be relocated. Sewer needed to be extended. And work needed to be done with housing agencies to relocate the lowest-income units to other housing areas, which provided more adequate services to those who lived there. Work with Washdott on the Crossbait Highway through Fort Lewis at that time was suggested, and that has since been suspended. There's no funding on the horizon that anticipates that project will be completed. The recommendations also included recommendation to implement landscaping and streetscaping to make a business park more attractive and to provide fencing and a buffer for any adjacent residential zone areas. In 2011, the Pioneer came, and that's the blue arrow. That was Olympic Moving and Storage completed a new building. That was probably the first new building out there in decades. Extended the underlying zoning, and the underlying zoning was extended to include Woodbrook Middle School site, which was a prior non-conforming use. So it, you know, was allowed to continue under the zoning, but it was set the stage for that being able to be industrially developed. And in 2012, Phase One of the sewer extension was completed. So in, moving forward in 2015, the city was very active in supporting the I-5 JBLM Congestion Relief Transportation Improvement Project, the big mess you see going on between Lakewood and the, what's now Lewis, Maine. And that created a new interchange at I-5 leading into Woodbrook at the Thorn Lane exit. That was designed with the idea that it would facilitate freight traffic in and out of the business park. We will continue to work with you on facilities and supported the New Man Middle School, now Claudia Thomas Middle School, as a enhancement replacement of Clover Park's Woodbrook facility. So in, move forward on the slides. That's the right one. In 2016, permits were submitted for the 467,000-square-foot Panatoni warehouse across from the Woodbrook site. That's on the area that had been so long anticipated as a development site. And in Phase, in 2017, the Phase One of the sewer project was completed. We, I think that's when we were enabled to complete a loop, and the warehouse was completed. And at that point, multiple properties came on the market. So in 2018, we extended the industrial business park zoning, another 31 and a half acres, expanding it to the present 188 acres, and completed the sewer extension from Woodbrook to the east, 150th. The 467,000-square-foot warehouse was leased to DAMCO and Geodes, and Black Creek Properties purchased the Clover Park School District properties. Emerson Lake Business Park was established, and that has a CIPA in progress. The new interchange design build was in progress, and a new project at 146th and Woodbrook Drive was in process, the American Lakewood Logistics. A new project south of 150th and Woodbrook Drive is also in process. So a lot started happening in 2018, and people started to consolidate properties out there. So if we go forward to much the present, I think, is our last slide. It's a little bit harder to see from a big angle, but in 2019, 20, the first building was completed by Black Creek on former Clover Park School District property, south of 150th and Spring Street. Construction started on other Black Creek buildings and is currently moving forward full bore. Also, in progress are the American Lake Logistics property and a property south of 150th and Woodbrook Drive. The private sewer extension has taken place from 150th, on 150th from Spring Street to the west by Black Creek. And if you drive out there today, in addition to the various properties that are springing up, you'll also see a variety of commercial real estate signs indicating that development properties are for sale. And so this is where we sit today, and that 188 acres is fast filling up, providing jobs and economic stability for the city, pretty good tax base for the school district. And really, the linchpin in all this was going back to when the city decided that it would take the initiative to extend sewer to that area, because development could not take place without it. We're actually failing septic systems. In fact, there still are some failing septic systems in that area that are not hooked up to the school. So that's the reason we brought along John Coffield, is if you folks from the school district have any questions, he's the guy that has the answers. So I invite any questions. It's a pretty, you know, 50,000-foot overview of what's going on out there, but there's, one of the, one of the things that actually happened in the process here was that I heard at least one of the projects was slowed down a little bit because of the shortage of concrete, because they were using it all to repave the runway at McCord. So it, it's interesting that so much was going on in our neighborhood at the same time.
Well, Mayor, seeing that last picture, and really from the first picture to the last, we appreciate the overheads, you know, one of the things that we're just always reminded of is when you see the old Woodbrook field, and we recognize that that school and that field was a place for the community. And, you know, it's always a hard decision when you do have to move forward with progress, but you recognize it's going to also disrupt real human beings. And yet, at the same time, progress then creates, as you stated very well, opportunities for human beings as well. And so it was, it was a tough decision all around in terms of knowing how to move that initiative forward and to do that, which is in the best interest of the overall community. And we're just thankful that on our side, we were also able to utilize the funds that we made through that transition and being able to sell that property to create the Dr. Claudia Thomas Middle School. It's really impressive in terms of the school that we've built. I'll share a few of the specifics about it, but it is a state-of-the-art school. There's, it's as good of a school as anywhere in the state. And, you know, it is now the seventh school that we've built in the last, I don't know, seven or eight years. And in doing so, the last seven were done really at no expense to taxpayers. And so I just want to also say thank you to this amazing school district who has shown such financial integrity and, and good stewardship, and that we were able to move those six schools on base, because you know, when you see those overheads, you know that, that's JBLM there. And six of those last seven schools, we put on base there, and then also with the Dr. Claudia Thomas Middle School. So at no expense to taxpayers, seven of those schools were completed. We're very proud of that. And I'd also like to acknowledge how important it is that we get to sit here and collaborate today and work together to make sure that what we're doing is going to be in the best interest of that amazing community and home that we call Lakewood. It has, as you stated, it has an economic viability. It has places for families and has education. So all those things have to work together for good. And when we get together like this, it's just so much the right thing to do. So thank you for really wanting to make sure that we collaborate well, and we're very supportive of it. And it's still, to me, wonderful that we could name the school that we've built, Dr. Claudia Thomas Middle School. And as you know, she was the first African-American mayor in the state of Washington, right from our own great Lakewood. And so it's such a great thing to be able to honor her in that way. Of course, we all know that her background and education was exemplary as well. The kind of story for us on how we got there, because when you see this school, if you drive by it, or if you've had an opportunity to tour it, and Mayor Anderson, I remember you were there on the very, you know, first day of groundbreaking. So again, thank you for being involved in that. And now, when you go back and you see it, it's, you know, the school itself is completed. There's a few extra buildings now that we're putting up, but it is amazing to be able to offer that type of a quality of facility for our students, you know, in our community in Lakewood. And so when it goes back for us in 2016, you know, the Clover Park School District Board of Directors approved main architecture to begin the design process, and the goal was to take Woodbrook and Mann and merge them together and try to come up with a school that would have the right capacity for both of those students. And then, of course, you recognize that when we do that, there's military students at a higher level as well. So we tried to take all those demographics into consideration. And then, in 2018, we actually were able to authorize Corsmo Construction to begin the new middle school, under what we call the General Contractor Construction Manager, a program that helped us to be able to allocate the right funds at the right time. And then by August 2020, we took possession of the building and moved staff into it and almost, you know, just in time for COVID to hit. It's kind of sad that we really want this school up and running, and we're hoping to get it student-in-person friendly as soon as possible, of course. On the funding side, again, I just want to acknowledge that this is the seventh school constructed by Clover Park School District since 2013, without asking the taxpayers to fund that capital project. I know I'm repeating myself, but I've been on the school board now for 15 years, and we've worked with many other school districts. It's an anomaly to have that many buildings erected, especially without having an excessive levy or, you know, campaigns on the community. So it was a, quite a right accomplishment. The building itself came, you know, around the $76 million mark. At this point, it is expected to come under budget, so we're thankful for that. The highlights of the facility is that the building itself is 1,300, 131,599 square feet. It has 21.4 acres, so it's not quite as large as what we had in Woodbrook, but it is quite capable for housing the 1,000 to 1,500 students that it can house, or, I'm sorry, 1,000 to 1,150 students. And that's including a separate classroom that's being added adjacent to the school, and it has teacher planning space, boys' and girls' restroom, staff restrooms. It's basically also serving some of the fields to where there's restroom facilities that can be used for those activities as well. The classroom building that's, you know, adjacent to it will be completed really in April or May of this year. The main school building has 48 classrooms, has three science classrooms per grade, resource rooms, music choir, band rooms, CTE rooms, art, a media center, computer labs, a race stage platform facing the commons, and a full prep kitchen. There are also rooms for life skills, success, and GT, as well as a main and auxiliary gym with associated locker rooms. Again, it is state-of-the-art, and we're very proud of it. The site also has three tennis courts and all-weather running tracks surrounding a football field. It has two baseball, softball fields, public and staff parking areas, and a bus loop that is separated from parent drop-off pickup lanes. And it is nestled in a quiet neighborhood as well. So it's a fantastic school, and we're expecting that it's going to serve our students and really future generations very well. So we're excited for it. And again, thank you for this opportunity to collaborate, and we're also thankful that the area in Woodbrook is being put to good use and helping the economy and the portion of jobs and the other things, benefits that come from it as well.
You know, I would note that Clover Park has a, a long history of building schools without having to resort to a bond issue. Some of you may not know, in 1981, Clover Park High School burned down. Insurance didn't cover rebuilding costs, and the new school was built based on insurance proceeds and to a large extent, selling an asset, which at that time was KCPQ Public Television at Clover Park Tech, which was still a part of the school district. I, I helped represent the buyer in that transaction. And so, as a young attorney, but that was, the purpose of that was bond issues weren't doing really well in the Clover Park District and levies, and there's obviously a need for the high school, and they found a way to do it. So there's a long legacy of doing that, and I'm sure the taxpayers appreciate your continuing efforts.
Well, thank you.
So the next item with the agenda is an equity discussion, and I am not sure who has the lead on this.
Well, we would turn that over to our superintendent to be able to give an overview on some of the, what we're calling our equity journey. I think it's important to acknowledge that we began a very focused opportunity to grow in the area of equity and create a policy that would be living and moving. And so it goes back really to about the year 2004, but in the last couple of years, we've been very concentrated on it and made a lot of progress. So Superintendent Better, anything that you can share on our scope of action for the equity would be wonderful.
Sure. Thank you, directors and council persons. Just in regards to our equity journey, as President Schaefer described, we, as a district, back to 2004, initiated an equity and excellence policy, and it was reaffirmed in 2012. And what we've done is embarked on what we call a deep dive in our equity work. And so that dive includes staff development, professional development for our staff. A lot of this is looking at what we bring to the table, as opposed to looking out the window. We call that looking in the mirror, as opposed to looking out the window, and really identifying self-awareness, what we bring to the table, what we bring to our students, so that we know how to best serve our students and families. We're also working towards empowering student voice. So often, we negate asking our students simple things like what would make this school better, what would make this district better, what would make this class better, to help serve and encourage learning. And so we're working to empower student voice, also to empower families who haven't necessarily felt enfranchised. We're working to empower them to their, so that their voice matters. We have recently embarked on policy development to address probably what I would call the inefficiencies of a previous policy in today's day. And our board has approved, as of Saturday, us to move forward in policy development and looking at the timeline for that, which would be about a six-to-eight-month process before we presented something for final adoption. And that would include massive amounts of stakeholder input with continual touchstones back to the Board of Directors. On Saturday, the board put together, through some small group work and activities, just the basic elements that they would like to see in a policy. And so we'll begin there with our, with our board, helping to create that from the ground up, as it should be. That's the basic overview of our work. There are many, many things that we're doing. We are, a primary piece of our work has been collaboration with the city. City Manager Coffield and I met with, along with a couple of folks from our teams, respective teams, and, and we just said, hey, what's happening and how can we work together to improve both of our organizations in terms of equity? And I think both the board and the council person saw a joint letter from City Manager Coffield and I, probably about early fall. And we continue to meet on a regular basis, not just John and I meet regularly, but we also will have additional meetings specifically around equity. And, you know, we're not trying to build a rocket ship here. It's really, what are the basic things we can do to move this work forward? And we've had a few things come of that, that were in the letter. So that being said, I think, again, it's about a 50,000-foot view of our equity journey. I'm sure there's more details, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to field those.
Any questions for the superintendent? I kick off with one simple one, though I suspect it has happened. Have you directly engaged our youth council?
So, good question. Yes, we've, I actually have a meeting to go to Youth Council set up for, I think it's the first week or so in February, but we have engaged the Youth Council directly in that. We had a young man at Lakewood's Promise talk to us. He's also a Clover Park School District Leadership Student from Harrison Prep, and he was discussing some family nights that were designed at his school to get, just to increase social awareness of each other, from student to student, family to family, and staff to both as well. And so what we did was I sat down with that person, heard what their, what their request was, and we, we analyzed that. And then I immediately sat down with our school supervisors, meaning our assistant superintendent and executive directors. And what was great was that our schools were already engaging in those activities, but we were able, through that conversation with that young man, to, to really bolster and, and look at some things that we could do again, that the students wanted to do, that didn't have to do with a math night or a reading night, but in the day of COVID, really had to do with, I need to know who this person is that I'm eventually going to be sitting in class with. And that's not just student to student. That was student to teacher and vice versa as well. So we just wanted, from that conversation, to set up some additional nights that were just socially oriented, so that as we move through COVID, there's going to be a lot of recovery. But as we navigate it, we can smooth the road out a little bit more by creating those social constructs between student to student, student to teacher, and then including the family as well. And then we have several students from the Youth Council that also sit on my Superintendent Youth Advisory Coalition, which is a group of students from each high school that essentially advise me. I ask them questions, they ask me questions, and our work together leads to actionable steps. And so we're really proud of that. That's part of our work around equity and empowering student voice.
Well, knowing how engaged those students are, that was your softball. A couple of other hands up here. We'll go to, we'll go to Mr. Waylon.
I'm sure I'm gonna, I'm sure I'm gonna get some fast pitches when I sit down with them.
Mr. Waylon?
Thank you very much. Well, good to see you all. I just want to open by saying thank you for joining us tonight, and it's great to see you. open by saying thank you for joining us tonight and it's great to see one another. I I hope we can do this more often, certainly in person. And and a brief comment on the first seventeen to eighteen minutes of tonight's presentation. The overview of what has transpired in the Lakewood Industrial Park with the utilization of the formerly cited Woodbrook Middle School. What a great thing for the taxpayers. It was a win win, not without challenging decision making on the part of both boards for sure, but a fantastic opportunity to renew a space and to provide the resources to build a state of the art school, middle school that I drove by. It it looks fantastic. I can't wait to walk through and see the inside of it and enjoy that. So just a thank you there. And Ron, a question to you on the equity journey, and I love that term because I think it's a journey for all of us. As we continue to learn and grow together, my question to you on the work you folks are doing to empower families and to ensure that their voice matters. I think that's fantastic. Can you tell us a little bit more about how that is working? I know it's challenging with COVID and and what you hope to achieve by way of, you know, deliverables. I'm not looking for say, but just what we hope to achieve with that. I think it's a great opportunity.
In general, what we hope to achieve is that families are taking a more active role because they believe that what they say matters and it will and it will lead to actionable steps. And I always tell kids when I'm meeting with them that I'm not here running for ASB officer and I'm not promised you an ice cream machine or soda machine in every class. And so what I do tell them is what I am promising you is that I'm going to listen to you and that and and that as the conduit to the school district and to the school board, you are going to be listened to. And so we talk about product, a process over product. And so when I meet with kiddos or families in this in in terms of your question, it's not necessarily about what the outcome of that meeting is, although you know, in genuine and earnest intention, we definitely are looking for if there's an outcome, let's get the outcome. But what empowers folks is whether it's students, families, whether it's staff, what empowers them is to know that they've been heard. So as we build this process, there should be an expectation that 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 students, parents, they expect to be heard and listened to. And and so the process is what strengthens that bond and that sense of community. If we just made superficial promises, then that would be seen right off the bat, right? People would know that. And then our work would be superficial. So the depth of our work is really about the process that we're creating. And that's where the empowerment comes from. So we continue to do that. And I think I guess I would say that that is really the outcome is to build community. So that sometimes I'm going to have to withdraw from from the bank. Sometimes I'm going to deposit in the bank. But because we've done that, we've built that community where the process matters and people feel heard. And that's where the genuine connection will come from.
Yeah. Are you receiving any specific feedback to date on on what families are looking for from the district other than an interest in being heard and having their concerns?
Families want to be involved with, you know, hiring, right? How do we support families knowing that their work, their voice is heard in the hiring process? One of the things that we did recently, and I give a lot of credit to our Equity and Inclusion Manager, Grant Twymon, because he brings so much to the table through his expertise. But one of the things that we did was we, when we hired our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools, of course, we went through the application process, got all the candidates. But what we did is we invited community members, some former students, some business owners and some family members, parents, et cetera, to be part of the application process, not on the tail end where we said, here's the candidates that we selected. Tell us what you think. But on the forefront where we said, here are the twenty candidates. Tell us what you think. No promise that what you say leads to a hire. But tell us what you think beforehand. So it didn't feel like the kind of the we picked and now you can pick from what we so we valued their opinion out in front and we got amazing feedback from that. We'll continue to do that work. We we are working with families and community members to come in and help us. Talk to us about the history curriculum. Tell us what your experience was. Tell us what could make it better. See what we're what I'm prescribing to in terms of empowering voice, whether it's students, family or staff, is if you're a business person, let's I'm going to pick a a a I'll pick Macy's. Sorry, I know this is public and you know, but really not Macy's, but Macy's doesn't make money by coming into a community and saying, here, buy this stuff. They make money by coming into a community and saying, what would you buy if you could buy something for from us? If we could provide something, what would it be? And so it's a supply and demand, right? So the same concept for me is let's go to the people that we serve and say, what is it that you need from us to make this the best it can be? And so basic premise there is is empower those voices and then provide what there's what those needs are. Again, process over the product.
Got it. Well, thank you. And do you have a choice for the coming Super Bowl? Share with us soon.
I think I'm going to remain neutral there. I better call my son before I spout anything off.
Very good. Good to see you.
Mayor.
You may have got a cheap shot from somebody that has to be corrected. So.
I think Carol had a question, Don.
Well, I have a statement. Quite frankly, a few weeks ago, when the city council had their meeting on the lights in Oakbrook. I want to thank, I want to give a shout out to Councilman Branstadter. When you, when you were talking about all the pros and cons, you made a statement, and I quote, that when we're looking to the lens of equity. And you took, I I thought, you know, when I heard you say that, I thought that's exactly how we should be looking at the big decisions that we make. And you went on further to say one community is not should not have lighting that we can't afford to put throughout the entire community. And when I heard that, you know, my thought was, you know what? We're really in this together. As a city council, as a school board, we are all moving toward this. And I just, I just want to thank the city council for looking at that equity lens on how you put lighting in one community and not the other communities. And I hope everybody heard that because it was, I think it was a very powerful statement that was very subtly said. And but it really is a base for our work that we're doing. So I want to thank you for saying that and bringing that to our attention that this is in fact how we should be and are making decisions. Thank you.
I would know if you're not familiar with our lighting program. It really started in the economic disadvantaged areas and worked its way toward Oakbrook. Oakbrook was the one of the last areas getting lighting.
As a longtime resident of Oakbrook, it is dark over there. And I thought, you know, anyway.
And it'll stay dark for a while longer than that, right?
You know, and it's really too bad that people didn't hear what was, you know, what the options were. But looking through the lens of equity, you cannot put underground house, you know, underground. Mike, you did a great job of being very succinct in what you were saying. We just don't do that. And my thought was, we're in this together. And if the district, the school district and the city are both using that lens, it's it's a unity. It's 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 very, I'm just very impressed and I'm very also encouraged that we are going to move these initiatives forward if we're doing it together. So thanks.
Thank you.
And I would like some lights, but.
Mr. Branstadter.
You're muted.
You're muted, Mike.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Carol, for those kind words. But in 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 that vein, I thank Ron for the the overview of the of how aggressive the school district and how seriously the school district has taken issues to do that. And we're looking to do that on the city side and have similar expectations for our internal growth in that area with the city manager. But I do think that, you know, over the past months of where it's been coming really important to be able to look at equity and inclusion in communities. And embarking on a learning journey about how that goes. You know, one of the repeated stories is it's easy to find the obvious problems where there were where things are are very overt of of where there is a a lack of equity or or something has been been going wrong. It's the it's the unintentional things that that don't manifest themselves for a good bit of time that are that came from decisions and policies that were on the unintended consequences have led to problems. And I think that for and the the thing you need to do with that is that you really need to, if you find in a community of where there are some evidence of equity issues. That it isn't enough to just look at the symptoms, but you've really got to look for root causes. That's what the you know, that they say to do that. And the root causes may be well hidden. So I do think that going forward, the twelve of us as elected leaders in the community are good team to begin to look at our community as a whole and not look inside our respective organizations, but also look to do that and 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 help collectively to try to look to see, you know, are there some things that we should be paying attention to that we can begin to make moves that over time will correct some things, you know, the beginning of our meeting today. We we dealt with situations and we talked about the growth in Woodbrook. And also the growth in the number of new schools in the school district. Those were two different things that took a good bit of time. And, you know, the first steps were setting the table type steps to do that. And I think, you know, we collectively at some point after we look internally should be looking in the community to try to see what we can do to flush out any root causes and develop plans where we and the rest of the community together can begin to address them. So I, you know, would 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 hope we'll grow into that sort of a partnership and share with each other things that we learn so that we can have some synergy amongst ourselves in terms of crafting solutions or of looking for the direction of change.
I think those comments are really profound, Councilman Branstadter. And I would say that partnerships in building community and collaboration is how we get to those places because when we find something that's at the root. We it tends to be uncomfortable because it's a usually a systemic or belief system that we might be challenging. And the more we have that collaboration and partnership as we do between the district and LMCC, Lakewood Multicultural Coalition, we work on things together to draw those things out. A good example of our our partnership with LMCC has was the cops and kids last year, where we had the middle school students sitting with Lakewood Police Department officers just getting down to what I call and what my dad would call the nitty gritty of belief systems, like what kids and families believed about police and what police, you know, believe some of them were were just plain misconceptions. But to get to that place, I will quote a pastor from Florida and I apologize for not knowing his name, but I'm smart enough not to say somebody else's words as my own. But if you change the root, you can change the fruit. And so we can do that through partnerships. So I appreciate your comments.
Since Carol was so kind to offer some positive feedback for the council, I'd also like to say, but from my personal observation, I'd like to commend the the school district board and administration for raising expectations for students. It seems like a simple thing. I I spent my formative years in a community where opportunities were few and expectations were low. But everybody in that community pretty much looked like me. It wasn't until I was thirteen that I I moved to this area and I would hate to see the vestiges of so much dissent and inequity. Have people discern that certain groups of students don't have those capabilities. And therefore have lower expectations for them. I I'm really simple sports analogy guy all the time. And and when I coached, I always used to say, you never taught anybody how to high jump higher by lowering the bar. And I think Clover Park School District over the last decade has made a demonstrable move toward higher expectations for its students. And that's a great thing. We have to make sure that those expectations are for all the children of our community in and out of school and no matter what they look like, where they came from or who their parents are. So.
I appreciate that comment, not only making it because the standards are out there, we've got to set students up for success. We genuinely do. So we're we do disservice to any child that we don't help to achieve his or her best. That's so true. And I'm also thankful to this district for what it's done in terms of empowering the students to actually achieve it as opposed to just having the expectation of it. And so that means where you actually have to roll your sleeves up, allocate funds, do the extra work, challenge some things to be able to move. And I I'm very grateful Superintendent Banner to Union District for doing the extra work. It's it's not like doing this work means that we're not doing the previous work. We're doing the previous work and this work. And I'm I'm very proud of that. And so I do appreciate the comments that we're not in any way trying to take a mild or a passive approach to equity because we genuinely want our students set up for success. And so we've done what we call cultural shift. And we we want them to be strong in achievement. We want them to be strong in business skills and the soft skills and leadership and character and collaboration. We're expecting that we will set our children up to be holistic, that they can come out and truly make a difference in our community and our world. That's what we're doing. And also see Jason Wayland and some mothers that are on CELP and who've given a lot of effort. I know that CELP's been stalled during our COVID situation. But CELP has really also been a great partner in making sure that we see what is necessary for a child to thrive in Lakewood, just like a student can thrive in our school district. So thank you community for what you're doing.
Anyone else before we move on? Mr. Waylon.
Just throwing out kind of a softball question to ponder. How will we collectively define success or our progress on the road toward our equity journey as a community? Is that a fair question to put to ourselves? I mean, how are we going to define success and when will we know it if 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 we can? Or maybe the incremental successes that we're experiencing that you've experienced and articulated now is indeed that. But it's kind of a good question for all of us to think about. How are we going to find success and how we know when we see it, feel it, touch it, experience it?
I I think that's a great question for us to ponder. And as we think about our equity journey, we think about it in terms of a marathon of sprints. Because it's almost like you should never really arrive, but that whole marathon is built of a bunch of sprints. And so I think those sprints are the short term successes. And you define those based on the goal that you set to to achieve that. But I love your question about the overall. How do we define that? Because we have to celebrate along the way in order to keep that vision out in front. Because during that marathon, some of those sprints won't be wins. Some of them will be very significant challenges to to us, whether that's professionally or personally, right? In terms of literally in terms of attacks sometimes. And so I love your question, Jason, and I think that we should ponder that and collectively determine what that looks like. Because I don't see an end to it to this type of journey. But I see marathon of sprints and we got it. We get this far, we got to celebrate that and then kind of plan it. You know, we win, we 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 achieve something and it makes us stronger for the next challenge. But I love, love, love that question.
And I would acknowledge that we do have a very intentional six month program for the next six months of what we're doing. And so it is very strategic and measurable over the next six months. And it might be good for us to just to get to do some further collaboration with the city on what our measurements are over the next six months.
It's a great idea, you know, kind of a check the pulse, catching our breath in the marathon, you know, and getting geared up for the next sprint. As Marty and Ron probably know, I think John has been chatting with Ron quite a bit. We've budgeted our own full time equivalent to assist us in this journey. And I think that person is yet to be hired, obviously, and starts, I believe, around July 1st or thereafter. But you know, that's that is a mile post along our journey and one that we hope will bear fruit working collaboratively with with Grant and certainly with the board and all of the leaders at the district. So there's a lot going on that we can be proud of. At least we've started on the journey and I look forward to kind of further engaging. I think I think more engagement rather than less is going to be good for all of us.
Thanks. Thanks, Superintendent Banner. That reminds me, another borrowed from a coach, my license plate holder says, win the day. And isn't it all about sports? It's those sprints, got to win the day then before you go on. Mr. Wagman?
Yes, I appreciate all those comments. As Mike Branstadter said, there's 12 of us that have a voice to the community of what we're doing. And so I think one of the things I would suggest that we we do too is the terms. You know, what does equity mean? And and that we have a good definition of that so that we can share it with people in our community. You know, I've talked to people in the community and they say, well, just equal, get everybody equal. Well, equity isn't really about equal. Equity is about providing the resources to the people that need it to help them move along. So I think having discussion over that definition will help us understand and help us better able to communicate what we're doing. And and I appreciated Jason and Marty's comment too on what is success? And certainly, you know, we as a school board are working on the definition of what is success. But we also need to hear from the city council. When you when you look at things, I mean, certainly the district gets graded on on smarter balance assessments and those kinds of things. And when those come out in the newspaper, it says, well, what are you guys doing? And da, 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 da. But as Marty said, you know, it's we're talking about the whole child. Your child, my child is more than a test score. But test scores are important because it sends a message to our community. Certainly, if you're in the real estate market, looking at schools and what they're doing makes a difference for our community. And so we need to work on those things. So as the as the city council looks at those things from their perspective and their lens, what is important so that gets communicated to all of us? So I really believe that having a good discussion on all these areas is very, very important as we move forward. So thank you.
Ms. Farmer?
I appreciate everything I've heard so far. And I hear passion and commitment all the way around and a desire to move forward and that we have the same outcomes in mind. And I wonder if now is the time to promote or to float the idea of a joint resolution, a public commitment that we're working together? And we can then take next steps, we can define terms, we can we can set community conversations, we can look for those places that we can put policy in place and look for those opportunities for finding root causes to be able to to make change. And I'm not sure what the next steps would be to do that joint resolution. New person.
I think that the next step on that may be to have Mr. Banner and Mr. Caulfield, who have been meeting regularly on things that are ripe for collaboration to come up with some ideas for that resolution rather than platitudes. Platitudes are easy. I think we the difficulty is, I think you've expressed, is coming up with specifics as to what we're going to collaborate on and how. But I think.
And I'm happy to share with the board and see their insights on empowering Superintendent Banner to move in that direction as well too. So, you know, that's why we get to have special meetings. That's why we get to do workshops. And we I think it is a wonderful idea. And then I appreciate you taking it from one level to the next. And I also know that everybody has capacity, but I'm excited to talk with the board. We hear you and recognize that it's a viable viable option, likely in the best interest of our community. So we will, board, we will look at this in our very next workshop.
Thank you.
I want to one thing, I think that's, can I say one thing, Don, real quick? I think, Linda, that's a fantastic idea. And I wonder if from a listening session perspective, when we engage with the community, might we not do it in a joint way? Where because families in the district are certainly residents of Lakewood. So it seems to me it would be great to collaborate if that's part of this resolution process for us to listen to our constituents and listen to our district families and learn more from their perspective as to what they would help us define as success as we move along the journey. I think that would be a great step forward to do some collaborative community sensing sessions somehow.
I'm just going to jump in and say I'm having trouble not grinning from ear to ear because I love the conversation. I also appreciate Marty in terms of us being able to have some conversation. And then the board obviously directs me as you guys direct John. So but I I I feel really good about what I'm hearing.
Yeah, for me, it, Ron, just so you know, it's a capacity thing. And so we we've been doing a lot of sprints and we want to make sure that we move the, we have a, when I look at the six month timeline that you proposed for us just, you know, a few days ago, it's a it is aggressive, that word was used. And so I just want to make sure that we stay our course as well as engaging the community in these other areas. So anyway, it'll be a great topic. And I'm looking at all of our board directors and I saw a lot of grins. So that's wonderful.
Before we move to Mr. Branstadter, I would want to note kind of a follow up to Jason's comment about joint listening. I think it's something that has a lot of merit. The greatest compliment I think I've ever heard regarding the city of Lakewood came at a listening session in the superintendent search for the district. And it was from an immigrant mother in a grade school through a translator. They asked, what's the best thing about here? What's your problem? And her comment was, I'm my children and I are safe here. It's not like where we used to live. We can go outside, we can go to the park. This is wonderful. And it's not that it's perfect. It's not that there isn't danger, that it's not that there is a crime. But comparatively, that value that she had in the community was, you know, it's kind of the foundation for everything else you do. You have you and your family want to be safe. You want to be housed, you want to be clothed, you want to eat. But those basic needs. But that was at a Clover Park School District meeting. The people don't distinguish the between the lines of demarcation among different government entities. It's a community. So I think that really has some merit that it also, I think, would send a powerful message to community of our collaboration.
Yep.
Mr. Branstadter?
Yes. Thank you. I actually would have some thoughts along that same line because we're really going to be empowered, not by what we say and do, but we are initially going to be empowered by what we hear. And that, you know, it's easy to fall into a habit of when you hear something and you can say, yeah, that's really a problem, but it's not my problem. It's the county's problem or it's the state's problem or something to do that. And we need to be very conscious about as we are, we are listening that to be sure that we pass on what we hear between the city and the school board and others in the community, rather than telling people, go tell somebody else what you just told me. You know, if we're the first set of ears, you know, then 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 let's let's put that into action rather than just referring people to the next step. Because, you know, people of all ages, young people and of all sorts, you know, if they didn't know, if they knocked on a door and it wasn't the right door, they're unlikely to go to the next door.
Been going for about an hour now and it's a subject that could take months. So perhaps move on to, we've got some action items there. We can move on to behavioral health support. And again, I'm at a loss for if there's an intended lead on this, this subject.
This is one where we we have a, you know, a report out of some of the efforts that we're making and from, you know, all the way from social emotional learning to mental health opportunities for the mental health resources for our kids in our community. And so I invite Superintendent Banner to begin the conversation. Then if any board director wants to share, they can as well.
We have several avenues to support the mental health of our students. We recognize that mental health has been an ongoing concern for our young people around the nation. And COVID-19 did nothing to help that. And so as we continue to navigate COVID-19, we again have to look towards the recovery period, which is going to be multiple years. It's not going to just be, you know, we've got herd immunity and everything's good. So the impacts on our on our students and quite frankly, on our staff, we're going to have to attend to. Several of the ways that we do that have outlined in a report that our board has. School counselors who are onsite, they provide in-person services. Although school counselors are not necessarily mental health counselors, they do deal with crisis management. But for the most part, we like to think that our school counselors do a lot of referral. But again, just depending on the given day and situation, our counselors step up and they provide those mental health supports for students, especially in the moment of need. We partner with Greater Lakes annually. We use some of our DODIA funding as well as our levy funding to do that annual contract with Greater Lakes. I didn't write it down, but I want to say it's in the nature of anywhere from around $250,000, around $250,000 a year. We on base have a school behavioral health, which is a partnership with Madigan Army Medical Center. These are folks that are within each of our elementary schools and they support the mental health concerns within the school where they build their caseload based on student issues, concerns that are brought to them from the principal and the counselors, school psychologists. Those folks meet with our school teams. They are embedded in those schools. And so they meet as a team to do triage on a weekly basis. They bring parents in to support the needs of the students as well. Last year, we partnered with the fellows out at in the in the I could Dr. Flake, I can remember the names, I just can't remember the titles. But it's with the child behavioral health. And we actually had the doctors coming out and doing observations of their patients in the school setting to help them provide a better understanding of what this child's child is experiencing in school and how to best treat the child. We have military family life consultants who are also part of the DODIA process. And they are less of a case management, mental health support. They have a lot of restrictions as to how they report their work, but they work with the families as well as with the students, again, based on referrals. We recently partnered with the Stephen Cohen Military Family Clinic right down the road here in Lakewood. And and that was a partnership that was brought to our attention through through the community engagement leadership team. We went out and visited with those folks and they support military veterans with a very broad definition of who they can support. You can be the cousin of a of a veteran and they're going to support you with mental health services, counseling services. They will be working specifically with the Thomas Middle School. And we felt like that was the best avenue for an initial partnership with them because of the military impact in bringing Thomas and Woodbrook together. That's going to be a significant military impacted population. Now, the students who are not military impacted at Thomas will receive support through the Greater Lakes counseling support that we put into each of our schools. You know, we we continue to welcome other community partners, expanding funding and services provided and additional grant funding to focus the COVID recovery efforts. So we are really starting to look at the recovery. We know we're going to get through this. We're trying to manage the crisis of COVID less and less on a daily basis through preparation and planning. And so we're starting to reach forward to what COVID recovery would look like. Within our schools, we have our advisory classes in our secondary schools, which can support both career and college forward planning. But we also use that time when appropriate to support issues of the day that would support the mental health of a child, right? To try to reduce the stress by just having an opportunity in a safe place to talk about certain things. In our elementary schools, we're looking at what we call classroom circles. And through our, gosh, I'm just having a gap in thinking right now in terms of the curriculum. One of my folks would right now be probably, feel free to text me, anybody on my team, the curriculum I'm trying to think of. But we will work to have social circles on a daily basis in our elementary schools just to start the day off so students know they have a safe place. It's kind of boils down to Maslow's second step. I just got the text. It's the second step curriculum. The it boils down to Maslow's hierarchy, right? You're not going to be able to teach a student when their mind is is on their tummy because it's hungry or their mind is at home because they're not sure about some stressful issue that happened at home. So our goal is to support our kids constantly and proactively so that we can teach and they can learn the curriculum. So we want them to be successful. We want them to be lifelong learners. We want them to collaborate. We want them to have great character and we want them to exhibit leadership. In order to do that, we have to take care of their needs. That would be my, again, kind of 50,000 foot view.
I see Paul Wagman's hand up.
Ron, you know, there's some things out in the community talking about medical facilities being provided at schools. And and there's some pushback thinking that parents are going to be eliminated out of the communication. Could you maybe just make sure everybody understands that, you know, we as a board really want to keep parents involved? And, you know, how does that work with some of these programs that we've got in place, both for mental health and for health?
Right, well, 13 is the magic age. That's just the legalities behind things. And and I have children and I would want to be involved with, you know, if they're planning on seeing somebody or getting advice, you know, if they have a mental health concern. But truthfully, the legality is the age of 13. And so a student who's 13 or over can say, I want to see a counselor. We always, always, always do our best. We always, always, always do our best to include parents. Excluding parents from my perspective would be a travesty, but, uh, again, if a student says. I want to do this and I don't want my parents to know, we have to honor that. In some cases, it's about protecting the child because the student may want to talk about something that. If the parent knows they're talking about it, could cause some serious concerns when they get home. Which is, that's just one aspect of things. As a district, we have not moved forward with any of the. I'm not sure which, which of those in-school clinics you're talking about, um, Director Wagman. But for us, we have a couple of schools where there are in-school clinics and that's through the Department of Defense. Um, and Madigan Army Medical Center, um, and those appointments are generally made. Uh, through the, with the parents because it's easier to get to the clinic at school than to take a day off and, you know. You can't get to the clinic or, or you're going to have to miss a full day of school or it'll take a month to go. But that age 13, that's the kind of the tussle that we deal with and. Whenever possible, we are going to reach out to parents if there was a issue where we were required not to. That usually means there's something, the safety of the child is involved. But it does not take the permission of a parent for a child who's 13 or over. To engage in mental health support or counseling. Again. At every cost, we want to make sure that the family is included in that, um, in, in those types of decisions.
Thanks, uh, for the update, Mr. Wayland.
Thanks, Ron, for the overview. During one of our conversations months ago before COVID, when we actually had a chance to see one another. Uh, you would express some. Great sort of anecdotal thoughts about the need for mental health services in the district, which was an eye opener for me. Uh, and I appreciated that. And. I wanted to just get your sense tonight, you know, anecdotally, uh, on the true magnitude of what you see ears to the ground. In Clover Park. And if you had your magic wand, which you do, because you're, you know, you're the superintendent and you've got the magic wand. Uh, and now that we've got the, the 1/10th, the 1% that's been passed at the county, which is fabulous and. Gives potentially more resources. How would you advocate and how could we advocate for the district? As to how those resources could be directed and, and best utilized for the benefit?
Right.
Yeah.
My ears to the ground, which is pretty easy because. My daughter's room is right over there and she's 17 years old and we work on the stir craziness and the cabin fever of COVID. And so I would say that, you know, we talk about COVID has exacerbated the inequities of our, of our communities. Um, and it has also exacerbated the, the. The mental health problems that exist in our community. So it did no favors for us. I, I know I'm preaching to the choir and saying that. So. Um, if we had funding, my, what I would advocate for is a systematic approach, not a. I, you know, kind of the shotgun spatter approach. And so if it were for our, in, in terms of supporting our district. I would advocate for funding to help support and enhance the programs that we already have. Because I think that we do a really good job with what we have. Um, and so I would say it's support and enhance the programs that we have, because when we come back to school. You know, again, the kiddo that was struggling before COVID is going to be, it's going to be an insurmountable task just to, to. Say, hey, come and sit in this chair and learn, right? And the kiddos that maybe weren't struggling, at least outwardly. Those struggles are going to be more overt and outwardly, um, obvious to us. And so, you know, short answer. Uh, support the systems that we have and, and enhance those.
And I'll throw one thing out there too, anecdotally from my kid who's 15. Uh, and now going to high school, um, at Bellman. You know, the, the re-entry challenges, a lot of these kids have never met their peers yet in the last six or eight months. And there's trepidation about actually meeting or introducing oneself physically, face to face. I think there are opportunities when the time is ripe to have. Simple funny little icebreakers for these kids to get to know one another in a informal way. Before they're plunked down next to each other and trying to decide who they can sit next to at lunch.
That, that's exactly what our kiddo from Harrison Prep and the youth council was explaining to me at the Lakewood Promise meeting. And that's when we went and, and I talked with those folks about, hey, let's make sure that we're not just doing. You know, I, I don't, it's tough because you've got to do what's right in the moment. And so when I say to my team. Hey, let's do something that's not a math night. It's not because I don't think the kiddos need math and that their parents need to understand that, but it's because of what you just said. I'm never getting to math when I've got kids sitting in a class that they're, they're just feeling awkward about knowing each other, right? So let's do some things that connect each other, that connect us as a community.
Exactly. Thank you.
So just, just kind of a, a real brief overview, uh, you know. Everybody's heard about the provision of the state constitution that says that. The paramount duty of the state is to support the common schools. And the McLaury decision evolved out of that, but there's very. Deeper in the constitution, there's also a provision that says, we're talking about passing the buck earlier. That the state is responsible for mental health issues. It, it's in there. They, uh, but you, you with the schools have, uh, you know, had. Scope creep forever, for my entire lifetime, because all the children are assembled there. So it's easy. Well, we'll do it at the school. Uh, by the way, you've got to increase the number of minutes you're teaching on math, but we're going to give you three more programs to administer. So we recognize that and, uh, you know, the, the mental health tax at the county level is the state passing the buck down. So we'll, we'll give you the authority to do some of the things we're supposed to be doing. Uh, we want to allocate the, the money for it, make a tough budget decisions, but we'll, we'll let, we'll let you tax people and deal with it because we are. And some of that creeps down to the city, who really from a functional standpoint. Isn't a mental health or health provider at all. Uh, but we've now, uh, budgeted an expansion of our co-responder. Uh, and both mental health professionals to go from one to two. That works with people in the streets that are in crisis. Um, and tries to get them channeled into, uh, the use of the resources that are available. Uh, we were advocates in the recruitment of the Cohen Center. Uh, and worked hard to see that that was located in Lakewood so that it was accessible to veterans here in Lakewood. Uh, we have a law enforcement, uh, allocation in the state budget to, uh. Work to provide public safety at Western State Hospital so that both the staff and the, the residents can. Uh, coexist in a safer environment where they can, were able to get their mental health. Treatment and, uh, we also have our 1% uh, set aside from the general fund budget that we. Uh, allocate to community service grants, some of which goes to. Uh, nonprofits that provide, uh, mental health services. So. The city, while it is a task with it, uh, has not abdicated all responsibility to those who should be taking the lead. And we've tried to fill some of those gaps. Uh, I like to think, not as a shotgun, just throwing money out there, but trying to find. Uh, gaps that, that can be filled that we could actually functionally make a difference. And John may have something else that I forgot, but, uh. Uh, we, uh, we try to be good partners and, and, uh. Uh, I've, I recall being in DC and advocating for the. Program that, uh, provided the funding for, uh, mental health professionals being embedded in. Schools with a significant military population because obviously. If you're not the top district in the state, in the country that could benefit from that, you're certainly in the top 10. So, uh, a congressional delegation was, uh, well aware of, uh, the direct, uh. Direct benefit to this district. Ms. Pearson.
Along those same lines, I was just going to say, well. I was going to talk about the state funding as well. Cause I feel like many of you were at the presentation with Jamie Boomer. He gave a list of what schools were, used to be tasked with. What they're now tasked with, and it's like a list that reaches the floor. But you still have the same amount of hours in a school day. But it just seems like, you know, everyone wants the schools to deal with it because that's where, um, all the students. Or kids in the community are, which makes sense. However. You know, the definition of basic education came up a lot. In the levy process because people are, said, why do you. Uh, deserve more money? You already get funding for basic education, but things like mental health, what. What is needed at the schools is not what is funded. And of course, if we don't address the mental health issues. It's the school's fault if something happens. So I think that that's important to remember in the community, to remember that. You know, we're doing the, the absolute best to give all the resources to the kids, but it's hard to do that when you don't have the funding. And so we appreciate the levy did pass because it allows us to do more, but I think that it's only going to. The need's only going to get greater when COVID. When ends, it's go back into school. Um, and the funding is not going to increase. Those levy dollars are going to be the same. The state, you know, is probably not going to be handing out money as everyone's trying to recover. So you know, we're trying to create partnerships, get grants and do the best we can to provide the best services.
Thank you. Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Uh, I just want to thank Superintendent Banner for his remarks on what improvements. Uh, you know, enhancing the programs that we already have, which I think is, is a way to. To quickly and directly i- improve mental health services in the schools. Um, I, I would say that the county's 1/10th or 1% is predicated on some state approvals that they may or may not get. And if they get those, um, the programs then would, would come into effect sometime after, uh, in June, probably or July. There is a, a, a spending program within the ordinance that was passed by the county. But really the, the, the budget itself, when we put the two-year budget together for 22, 23. Is where that spending plan's going to be. So. I mean, we really do have a relatively short window because once that spending plan is in place for the two years. It becomes difficult to kind of move the, move the needle. It starts to become kind of like moving a battleship. Because once certain groups are getting those, those funds, uh, from the 1/10th, the 1%, they're going to want to keep them. So I think the schools really do need to be at the table and, and I think, uh, us understanding what you need. Because I think we, we know that we would like some more for the community, things like M-Cert and, and, and things like this. Keep in mind also that this is really, when we talk about mental health, a lot of times this is an equity argument. This is part of the equity that, through the equity lens, because somebody at Greater Lakes once told me, and I was on, on the. Uh, the finance committee for a while at Greater Lakes. The person said, well, understand that, they just stopped the conversation. We were talking about mental health and they said, Paul. Understand, this is all Medicaid recipients. I said, oh, really? You don't get private? She goes, no. Private pay people go in a completely different system, right? And it's like, oh, okay. And well, that's not completely entirely true, but if you have the means. There's other paths on the mental health side that you can go, that you could already access. So when we're talking about behavioral health improvements and. We use behavioral health to start talking about substance abuse issues and various things like that, which I'm sure. A lot of our families are, are, uh, impacted by on a day-to-day basis. That this really is, you can start to see here. If we do this right and, and really take a view that we've got to get this out of the community and it's got to be boots on the ground. That we can make some real improvements, uh, in, both in our community and in our schools. Which of course are in our community. So I don't want to do those as separate items, but we can really make some improvements. It won't be the magic bullet, like the mayor was saying. The, mental health is supposed to be a state exercise, but what they've done with the 1/10th, the 1% is they use that as kind of a cudgel. Against, uh, uh, the, the, the local governments to, to make health, uh, behavioral health improvements. So I appreciate those remarks. I think that's something that we can work with. Um, going forward and advocating for the city of Lakewood. With the county on, on the kinds of things that, that we need out of that behavioral health tax. So thank you.
You're on mute, Mayor.
President Schaefer.
Yeah, you know, I've really appreciated this conversation. And I'd just like to add one more. Aspect of it that I think is, has been significant. There's a lot of times when we think in terms of. Mental health, we're reacting to people's needs. And one of the things that I think is powerful that we've also done as a district is we've got on the front end of it. We've created leadership, we've done the student voice, we, we've done a lot of other. Aspects where you're building character and you're, you're building some capacity upfront to. Uh, not only avoid some of the mental traumas that you could have, but to create coping resources with peers. Having a strong impact on other peers. So, uh, you know, that's. That's a powerful way to do more than just. You know, responding after the fact. And so just like with the city council, having the, you know, the youth council. That's a very proactive way of setting those kids up to be able to accomplish great and mighty things. And so. The more that we can also collaborate on that in terms of, um. Building leadership capacity, because I know our school district's doing that too. That might be an area where we look at because building leadership is a significant way to offset a mental trauma.
Thank you. Mr. Brenstetter.
Yeah, I, I, you know, this is a, a good conversation over, uh, a, a topic that's, uh. Uh, important. I think, uh. Two points that I just like to make is that. The behavioral health, the. Funding and while it's been inadequate and it's maybe going to get better. Is always going to be competitive. There are. Although we're talking about kids here this evening. Um, you can go to another group and they'll talk about veterans and you can go to another group and they'll talk about the homeless and that. And, and everybody is competing. So the way that you have to set yourself up to be successful, to have. Adequate resources to enhance what you're doing. Is not just speak about the challenges and the problems that you're trying to combat. But you need to begin to do a bit of tracking of your successes. Uh, and of, of being able to, to do that because communicating successes. To, to, to funders, but communicating to, to the, to the community as the director. Indicated when they say, why do you need the money? Talk about it being, uh, effective. As we in the city do when we talk about how effective the community resource team. Is and why that's, and why we're increasing funding to it. The other thing is, is that, uh. You know, we, um, on both the city and on the school districts, I need to remember that. We've got to look, uh. At the, at the behavioral health, the, uh, position of, of, of our staffs. And of, and of, and of ourselves. So for the city, we are concerned with our employees and particularly our police officers and folks that. That deal with people who are stressful and in the school district. We need to make sure that we're investing adequately in, uh. The, the, the people who are with kids, uh, every day and who's, uh, uh. Behavioral health. Positive health, uh, uh, is, is going to serve as an example. And if they have. Uh, negative health that, that need to be, do it before it becomes the bad example.
Well. Again, we, we're talking about a subject that, uh. Could take weeks. Uh, I think we have, uh, good opportunities for, uh, collaborated, collaborating at least to see how. How we can supplement a system instead of, uh, running. uh how we can supplement a system instead of uh running parallel track as far as the city and the Clover Park School District go. Just note that there's one area that it may present an opportunity uh for collaboration in the future that is as uh beha- uh as behavioral courts expand. Uh, and we have a veterans court, but you go to mental health court, the substance abuse. Um, uh, and to the extent we move forward on those, there's obviously children involved in many of those homes. Most likely, if they're inside of Lakewood Municipal Court, uh, the majority of those would be in the Clover Park School District. So it it may be that uh an opportunity for uh refer collaborative referrals uh could be set up in the future to the extent we uh we have those opportunities. And and that's one of the reasons those work is there's the coercive power of the judge to help stimulate participation. Which is one of the great problems that you have with uh behavioral health in general is that uh you know, it's it's not a crime to have a mental health problem, be wandering around on the streets. And so there's little you can do to force people to uh uh through their present involuntary treatment. So I don't see any further hands up. And last item of our on our agenda is next stop for the community with respect to COVID nineteen. A subject that changes weekly. So I I I think that uh kick this back to the school district because you've got the most dynamic situation, probably the the biggest movement uh with respect to uh COVID nineteen and uh the immediate future will be uh s- some transition to in-person learning. We also have Mr. Coffield on the subject. Uh, go go to him first then. John.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, everybody. Um, you know, I think when it comes to COVID nineteen, there's really two ways to look at it. One is that we're going to look at it as the cla- glass being half full, the glass being half empty. And um, you know, I prefer to take the approach that the glass is half full. Um, you you know, I think as a community, as a nation, as 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 just the human race, we've endured, you know, quite a bit the last, you know, ten, eleven months. You know, now that the vaccination is upon us, you know, I view that as the kind of the end of the beginning. And I know now there's more talk about this, that and the other thing. But I am confident and I am confident in the powers that be that, you know, once the logistics systems get set in place, I mean, this has never been done before. So let's please take a step back and just maybe take a breath or two. But I am confident that once the logistics gets set and are put in place, that it will move along and the vaccinations will be distributed. I am also confident after talking to um um, three of my family members, uh sisters and in-laws who are five, actually, three sisters and two of my in-laws who are nurses and doctors, that people who are saying that they're not going to get the vaccination, once they realize that the vaccination is a good thing to get, um, are probably going to get in line as well. Um, but again, um, I think logistically i- it's going to move. You know, during all of this, you know, both the city and the school district, um, you know, really no different than most, um, but I'm a little biased toward Lakewood. I think we have done a better job. And um, but we haven't skipped a beat. Um, I think both agencies and, you know, as Ron and I, we have regularly kept in communication as best as we can. Uh, there have been times when, you know, uh, we have not spoken because uh either I'm buried with something or more often than not, quite frankly, the school district has been buried with things, probably more so than the city. And um, but um, you know, again, we haven't skipped a beat, you know, from the city's perspective, we continue to provide full services. We have not used COVID nineteen as a crutch in any shape, form or manner. We continue to build community as it relates to roads, as it relates to our parks, as we're as as it relates to just picking up illegal dumping and, you know, trash in the community. Uh, likewise, we continue to, you know, take care of uh individual citizens issues and question and and issues, no matter how small. Um, you know, the issue of the Oakbrook streetlights came up, you know, or earlier this week. I think that's, you know, a a prime example of the city council stepping up and, you know, rather than, you know, trying to show, well, we're right here, you know, they ultimately did what was right for the community. And I think that says a lot about, um, you know, all all of us um here he- here in Lakewood. Um, the other thing that the city has been trying to do, and I don't think we started out this way, I'll just be frank with you, but was to, but now it's becoming more and more evident, certainly as we talk internally at 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 the staff level, is trying to keep, you know, the community engaged. Um, and not so much with the city, but amongst themselves. And uh, you know, that's why we have put such a lot of effort toward making sure that our farmers market was successful. Why um a number of, you know, our MLK events, you know, having that, but just, you know, having that continued sense of 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 community. And we're going to continue to do that and hopefully ramp that up as we get into two thousand twenty-one. And um, again, because eventually things are going to return to some level of normalcy that with the way they were. At the same time, um, there's a lot of things that we did prior to March of twenty twenty that we're not going to do. And rather than getting into that, I would sum it up with that communities of the size of Lakewood, you know, smaller and medium-sized cities. Um, I think we are going to benefit immensely from the new way of how people are doing business. You know, right now there's a tremendous amount of folks that live in Pierce County that commute to Seattle. Um, and I'm not saying that that is going to stop right away. But I think there's going to be a significant change there. Um, I think there's going to be a good number of folks that are going to continue to work at home and but their employer is going to be somewhere else. And that is going to create opportunities for Lakewood. Don't know what those are um right now, um, but I think it I think it will. Um, maybe a good example is earlier today, our economic development manager, Becky Newton, and myself and Mayor Anderson met with REI and REI is looking at creating these opportunities for their employees to be able to live in a place that they want to live, but then have a place to come and work remotely when they're not working at home. And they're looking at the Pierce County region. Who would have thought that? Or where I come from, who would have thunk that? Um, you know, just a few months ago. And so that's just one example. So as we look out into the future, you know, let's, you know, let's maintain an open mind about what the possibilities can be because I do firmly believe that communities the size of Lakewood I think are going to be on the cutting edge. And that's going to have an impact, not just on how the city does business, but also what's going to be the impact on the Clover Park School District. Likewise, one of the things, the other one of the big unknowns is what's happening with JBLM? And how do they react to these changes as it relates to COVID nineteen as well? Um, but again, I do think they're all going to be positive. We just don't know what they're going to be. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Before we go to Ron, I'd like to note for you students of history that you may have just witnessed history as a full-blooded Irish-American quoted Churchill.
Well, I'm going to save Ron a little bit because we've made him respond to every one of these. Can I say around the the COVID nineteen is um, John Coffield, your your um half-full, half glasses, glass half-full, half-empty was so good. You you are right, there's a lot that we can create momentum from. And there's a lot of opportunities that can come out of it. And I appreciate the examples that you made. And and probably the hardest thing that we face is communicating and engaging the community, as you alluded to as well. So it's very difficult to communicate to everybody, especially when everybody has different viewpoints as to how they want their kids back in school and what that'll look like. It is so complex as people have not been able to get the vaccines yet. And we completely agree with you that they're coming, they're on their way, and that'll uh make a huge difference in what we're able to do. Our goal is to obviously move forward with educating our kids, and we know that's best when they're in person. There's no doubt how we actually are able to do that with state requirements, guidelines and uh also keeping staff and community safe is very complex with many layers. And so we are doing our best and we're in the a process of moving forward. We have a plan uh that's in place and everything, of course, is contingent upon those ongoing variables as well. But I also, you know, on the uh side of the glass being half-full, one of the things that we've decided as a board is that we're going to take a very strategic look at having a uh ongoing and virtual online school opportunities uh for our students. Because just like what you said, uh, John, there's a lot of people, myself included, that won't be going to offices anymore. It's just work from home. It's worked out so well. And so uh, what can we do to build capacity in that virtual learning space? How can we use our schools for internet cafes so that we can come and do the things of collaboration and soft skills that we want our students to have? So the board's already um working with our district to move forward uh having what we want is one of the best online school opportunities in the state of Washington. So we're we're looking at building that. And uh, anyway, I just wanted to share those things so that Superintendent Banner didn't have to uh hit on the complexities of not having specific answers all the time of exactly when school's going to start in person and for whom. But Superintendent Banner, you're welcome to share anything you want on that subject.
Well, I would say that um I too appreciate what you were saying, John, in terms of, and you said the word community multiple, multiple times, because I think that that's the only way that not only do we navigate this situation, but recover from it, right? Where when I talk about the recovery, there's going to be um economical economic recovery, academic recovery, social emotional learning, you know, that we need to use to recover um with regard to mental health. And so we, you know, it it becomes a little cliche-ish because I I see it everywhere, but it's not when I say it, to be honest with you. And and in every one of my addresses, uh weekly addresses to the community, I typically end that by saying um, we are better together. And and I truly believe that that that's the way we get through and prosper from this. We provide space and grace. Um, I talked to staff, uh principals about providing that space and grace to their teachers and asked them to talk to their teachers about doing the same for the students and families. Because you you also said this, like, we've never done this before. Um, if we did, w- we're probably not sitting here and and understand what what Zoom is because w- we're just older. Um, and so uh, um, but providing that space and grace and the ability to fail forward. And I said this to our board on Saturday, you know, this does not exonerate us from those high expectations that Mayor Anderson talked about earlier. Like, we can't lower our expectations, but we do have to be realistic about how we get to those expectations. Um, and that's what the future holds is how do we provide opportunity like uh President Schaefer was saying in terms of the potential for an online virtual academy or virtual school that those students that that's a better fit for are able to take advantage of that. So how do we provide that way forward for students? And and again, it's through partnerships. As a district, we continue not only to um to uh to partner with our our quote normal partners, right? The folks that we forge relationships with, but we're starting to look out at different opportunities um to again draw more folks into this thing we call community. And so, you know, you said that I I I almost started doing tick marks because I was just excited about the fact that you said community, because that's really what it's going to boil down to, is how do we do this together? How do we give space and grace? And then I'll just end my comments the same way I end them every week um on Friday on my video message, because hashtag we are better together. And we won't please everybody, right? It's a fifty-fifty, John. You and I talk about this in in leadership. We're making fifty percent people mad and fifty percent love us on a given day and it moves around. But but again, we do it together and we do the process over product. So better together.
So Mr. Wagaman was next.
I I since this was on the the COVID thing, um, in my job, my day job, I do handyman work and my client today said, I'm getting my COVID shot tomorrow. And I said, oh, where's that? Clover Park High School. Uh, you know, we as a board have and the city council have talked about, you know, sharing our facilities, having an MOU to do those kind of things. And here with this this emergency coming up, it's already coming together. So, you know, I I had, I knew we had talked about using some of our facilities to try and help. And and I heard specifically from a person that's going there tomorrow to get a shot.
I I hope, I hope to go into Clover Park Tech.
Yeah, that was my correct.
It's Clover Park Tech, huh? Okay.
Yeah, I uh my day, on my day job, I I was inside on the uh logistics for that. So but there was some dis- confusion that the health department's uh appointment scheduler uh sent out wrong co- uh in improper or inaccurate confirmations to about fifteen percent of the people. That was then corrected. So that may have been part of that. Uh, Mr. Brenstetter.
Yes, uh, y- y- you know, I'm um like Mr. Coffield, uh, I I'm encouraged that the, you know, it's, while we don't know all the steps that we're going to go through that that uh, there is a way forward and a and 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 a way to to where we're doing. I did have a couple of questions as we are are uh going forward and uh you know, one of the things that has been important to the community that the school district has provided have been meals. Um, during the period of time of when there were no students uh going to school and so there were virtually all all, they were, they were all had the opportunity, if they took advantage of it, to to get meals provided by the district. But uh uh as you're as you're looking to phase in bringing students back to school, um, have you gotten the the necessary approvals that you need from the folks that fund those programs uh to be able to continue to feed the students throughout the community?
I believe we have a waiver from the federal government, FDA, to do that, to work that program through the end of the school year. And then when summer comes up, they'll make their decisions because it's it is the basic summer feeding program uh which allows all students from uh, well, all children from eighteen down to age zero a free meal. Um, and we provide breakfast and lunch. And uh, one of the things that we did, oh, I want to say it was about November, maybe a little earlier than November, is we started the week-long program um where we were giving out um five meal, five breakfasts and five lunches per student. Um, and we'd hand those out on a Tuesday or a Monday night at a couple of the of sites that we designate, I think Clover Park High School and Lakes High School. And that was for the parents who just couldn't make the 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 afternoon time, right? And in the afternoon time, we would give a lunch and then a breakfast for the next morning. Um, and so we really look for ways to uh support the community. We continued that through the uh winter break holiday season. We did that on both of those weeks that we were not in school. And I want to say I'm trying to recollect, but it was over four thousand uh meals that we gave out to about two hundred and sixty-five or so families that took advantage of that. Uh, more so the first week than the second week, but in total, we continued to give those meals out, which is unprecedented for us because again, in normal times, we don't have that program where we can get reimbursed for all of those meals. Um, and so uh because we were in that, what we call the summer feed program, um, a lot of our food insecure families were able to take part of that and have a better holiday season. Um, and that's just that component because we've been doing that since we um well, for eleven months now, almost, or ten months now, since we went on on this COVID issue started. Thank you for recognizing that, Councilman Brenstetter.
Yeah, I I I think that that's important as we start to phase in 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 learning in the in the back in the schools and that uh we make sure that there's still clarity about 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 how that program runs for for different families to do that. And then similarly, back before COVID, um, there were was always the uh the the issue around vaccination of of um, you know, what all the vaccinations that a child has to have to be able to return to school. or to be in school, and what kind of acceptance could be made to do that? Is there some discussions going on policy-wise about is a COVID vaccination going to be added to the required list to be in school for a future school year?
Well, what I can tell you is at this time, unlike, I think California has required it early on, at this time, there is not a requirement. The regular requirements are still in effect. And so we've done some communication campaigns to remind families that as we come back, even in a hybrid format, that those vaccinations need to be update, up to date. There's always different reasons why a family may not. But right now, plain, I mean, the flat answer is COVID has not been applied to that as a requisition or excuse me, as a requirement at this time. I imagine there are going to be conversations. I hesitate to speculate because as Mayor Anderson indicated earlier, that COVID pretty much takes weekly turns and and in a lot of our worlds, sometimes they're hourly turns. So we'll see. And we will definitely keep the community updated as we get that information.
And I just wanted to say that I don't particularly share a city manager's quandary about glasses being half-full or half-empty. I'm still waiting for when it's going to be time to go to the dollar store and buy a different sized glass.
So you know, one of the things the city will be doing is taking its opportunities like it will be tomorrow to help facilitate mass vaccinations. We're going to be providing some logistical support, traffic control. And I, I think that we look for further opportunities, some may be in collaboration with the district to take advantage of that. I also think that perhaps it falls up on those of us who are old enough to be cognizant of life in the 60s to take a more public role as we, sorry, I leave you out, Jason. Take a more public role in speaking about vaccinations, particularly vaccinations for COVID. I have a scarf, you know, they cut those off. I'm one of those folks like some of you are who has a smallpox vaccine scarf. And we have no smallpox. I remember the summer panic about whether there was going to be a polio outbreak. And my grandmother's neighbor who was in an iron lung. And the polio vaccine came and we don't have polio. And how many millions of lives have been saved by that? And people who are 50 and younger today never experienced what I would call the fear and the relief of mass vaccination programs. I didn't have the benefit of all the, I got all the childhood diseases, they didn't have vaccines for them. And that should, you know, I probably lost 20 IQ points. But, but maybe we can do something along that line if our respective legislative bodies think it's appropriate that we try to communicate to the community that it is in fact a good thing. I won't get off that so fast. And since I saw, I saw a hand up a little bit earlier and it's the way it has worked in our house for years. Give him his personal last word.
As it should be. No, I'm just kidding. Yes, for those, well, that's my dad. To say. But I wanted to just go off Superintendent Banner's comments of, you know, it takes a village. And many people's village is the school. So I just appreciate that we are giving options, you know, people feel very strongly about going back to school or not going back to school. And we've heard every one of them. I think it's important to remember that one, what works for your family does not work for someone else's family. COVID has made it so Mayor Anderson gets to play trucks with my son every morning. My mom goes and homeschools my niece and nephew. That's our village, but other kids literally don't have that opportunity. And school is the place that they feel safe, they need to go, their parents still need to work. I would be completely lost without my parents. And so I think it's just important that, you know, while it's, people are passionate about it, we're trying to give as many choices that we, as we possibly can to make it so hopefully families can, you know, find something that fits their needs.
Thank you. I don't know, I would defer to the school district if you, if you wanted to have any truly final words.
No, it's pretty, it was pretty hard to beat those ones. So I can appreciate why she got the last word in your household too. So no, our last word will be that at this point, the school board will look for a motion on our side to adjourn. So we actually vote. So I'm going to made by Director Wagaman, seconded by Looking, Anthony Velas, all those school board directors that agree, you can raise your right hand so we can see it. And so we're not trying to jump off soon there. I'm just letting you know that from our part, we are adjourned and very grateful to have been a part of this meeting tonight. It was wonderful to hear from each one of you. And I also see that we have some opportunities to roll up our sleeves and get to work going forward.
So is there any further business to come before the council? Look for the negative from Mr. Caulfield, then we're adjourned. And thank you.